Yeah, please. Real set Jonathan?
Whenever you're ready, yep.
All right, welcome everyone to the July 13, 2021 meeting is ongoing. My name is Mike Aitken, I'm the chairman. Uh, Cabas is with us tonight. Mr. O'Brien is. Mr. Ray Dell is with us, Mr. Himmel is with us. Chairman Frankel attends. Hey, can we uh make a motion to waive the reading of June 22nd, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from our June 22nd meeting.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's get into some old business. Case number ZB 82075 in Hugh, Hong Tran for variance to extend the driveway and the premises number 80, rent terrace, Yap and the representative here.
Here.
Yeah, okay, why don't you explain what you did instead of plan we have.
So I'm planning to do uh grass pavers, so be stone and grass.
Yep.
I s- I sent uh photocopies to provide examples of what I'm talking about for you guys.
Yep. Any questions, Ford, that I know we uh that's what we asked them to do, and did you talk to the uh? Yeah, HOA?
So I spoke with my neighbors, they told me that there's no HOA, it was never established.
All right. If there is, they'll have to deal, you'd have to deal with them anyways, that's not what. Uh, any questions, Mr. Cabas?
I have none.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Ray Dell?
Well, good.
Mr. Himmel?
No.
Okay, I think uh we already had the hearing here, so uh he did what he we asked him to do, I'll be voting in favor, any comments? Mr. Cabas?
Uh, no, he did do what um we asked him to do, and I think it was a good idea to send us the photographs, so I'll be voting in favor.
Is Mr. O'Brien?
Likewise, in favor.
Mr. Ray Dell?
Most.
Mr. Himmel?
In favor.
Cabas, have a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Madam number 20 dash 75, Min Hu and Hong Tran for a variance to extend the driveway of the premises numbered 60, I'm sorry, 80, rent terrace. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Madam Court, can we have a roll call, please?
Yeah, Michael Bayes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Brian Rudell?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Marty Aitken?
Yes. Thank you, can you hear the uh?
It's hard to hear, but when I put it on this, it's gonna be loud echo.
All right, uh. So he's being recorded, do you need any?
Yeah, I'm good, I'll figure it out.
Okay, further into tonight's whole business, ZB 8115 Virtual Capital Group LLC for special permit floodplain variance to remove the existing single-family and construct duplex side-by-side building 651 C Street, Yap and the representative here.
Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Aitken, members of the board, uh, this is Edward Fleming on behalf of the uh applicant Virtual Capital Group. Um, as you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a continuation of a matter that we presented back in May um regarding a proposed duplex um building at 651 C Street. Um, joining me tonight are my clients, Dimitri Shangin and uh Dimitri uh Chashinsky. Uh, as well, we're joined by the architect Jim Bailey and the site engineer Mitch um Slansky. Um, we're um, I'd like to just give you a little bit of brief overview, and then we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bailey to kind of walk through um the the revisions that we've made to the plans. Um, as you may remember, when we were here before the board in May, uh, we made our presentation for the for the duplex. And at that time during the meeting, the board and also the the abutting neighbor raised concerns about a number of different items related to the building, uh specifically, uh the concern was raised about the fourth floor floor level uh which provided access to the roof of the building. Um, uh concerns were raised about the um the office on the first level, which um I know, uh, Mr. Aitken, you raised a concern about that being utilized as a fourth bedroom. Uh, general concerns were raised about the overall size of the building and the ability to get in and out of the parking area, and also um uh some of the setbacks from the from the uh the property lines. Um, we believe that we've made substantial revisions to these plans that I'll have Mr. Bailey go through in more detail, but just to highlight the changes. First of all, uh, the fourth floor has been removed, and that now is substituted with a new sloped uh headhouse, which Mr. Bailey will show you. Um, we've reduced uh through Mr. Bailey's efforts, the overall depth of the building, so now instead of 50 feet in length, the building is about 37 feet in length, uh and it was pushed back as well as um reducing the overall size. It was pushed back from the front property line to open up that front space in the in the beginning of uh front of the building to the parking area. Overall, the building's FAR was reduced from point nine one to point six five, pretty significant reduction going from above 4,500 square feet to about 3,900 square feet, and the setbacks were increased to allow for a little bit of green space and and walkway uh next to the property. Um, and uh, and the office bedroom on the first level was also removed, eliminating that concern that you raised, Mr. Aitken, about the use of that room as a fourth bedroom. Um, overall, the the relief that we're requesting has remained similar, but um but less uh less dense um as uh initially proposed, and we are seeking the paving um a variance from the paving requirement to allow for that front uh area to be expanded to allow for guest and visitor spaces. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I could turn this over to Mr. Bailey to talk and show those plans maybe a little bit more detail. So Jim?
One second, Jonathan, this thing keeps dinging here, can we stop that somehow?
Okay, yeah, it's the participants coming in and I'll shut it off.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Jonathan. Go ahead, Counselor, you can continue, I just, it was driving us crazy here, just.
No, it's okay, um, I I I'd just like to ask Mr. Bailey if he's with us and look at this.
I'm here, yep.
Oh, you are, okay, Jim, if you want to take over from here, and uh Mr. Mr. Chairman, may he uh share his screen if possible?
Yes, Jonathan, could you do that, please?
Could be all set to share.
Thank you.
Okay, is is everybody seeing my screen here?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, just to echo, you know, what Ed said, he kind of covered all the bases, uh when we presented this back in May, um, it was just, it was, the response was it was too tall, too large, so in this revision, our goal was just to basically shrink it up a little bit, um, we we took the entire penthouse off, and instead we have headhouses that sloped headhouses that come up to a a roof deck, and uh so the penthouse is gone completely. We um, we wanted to try to maintain the two-car side-by-side garage, so the garage wall didn't move, but but everything but the garage, if you see in the rendering, the lighter portion did shift back 18 inches on each side. So the entire building got got three feet narrower, uh as well as it's shorter, uh going backwards as well, we're able to while we removed that office on the on the on the second floor, the stairs shifted inside kind of the the footprint of the building. So the whole building shrunk about nine or 10 feet in in depth as well, as well as shifting the entire uh building and garage back four feet to increase kind of maneuverability area uh outside the garage. Um, so um, this is, this is the rendering, I don't know how much you remember of it last time, but it is, it is significantly smaller without uh with the penthouse taken off to just a a sloped headhouse instead. Um, so this is.
You still have two parking spaces there, sort of, for guests for that night, right? Let's wait really at night.
Um, well, there's, there's two, two per unit in the garage, and then I I don't think the intent was to, for people to park in the in the exterior paved area, but that's more just maneuverability, we do have one dedicated guest spot.
Yeah.
Um, but I I think that more cars could could fit in in a pinch, but um, we're just, we're kind of dedicating that for maneuverability, just that for people in the garage backing in and out.
They could park up front if they had, because they still could kind of get out of there if another guest had a pick-up park on that side, that's nice.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, for short-term, for short-term visitor parking, we believe that that it's gonna provide enough maneuverable space now, uh especially with the building being shifted back a little bit.
Yeah, plus there's no, there's no place else to park around.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Yep, so um, I mean, this is the site plan, this, the the dark uh black dash line is the the old single-family that that was there. Uh, so we are increasing the setback on on one side, um, on the other side, it would um, it would be a little, a little closer than what's there. But uh you can see the 18-inch shift, right where the, at the back of the garage, we're shifting over 18 inches. Um, just to, just to, you know, so we're not as close to the neighbors, giving them as much buffers as they need, uh, you know, less of a shadow impact. Um, anything more than that, and it it kind of makes the upper floors a little unfunctional. Um, so th- these are the floor plans, uh so on the ground floor, it kind of stayed the same, other than that step in the back, and then the storage got a little shorter, and the stairs uh shifted shifted closer as well. On the ground floor, we eliminated the office, so there's no, uh, you know, it's, they're truly three-bedroom units, each one. Uh, and then all the bedrooms are on the top floor, three-bedroom, two-bath, uh with laundry and mechanical space. And then uh the stairs would go up to sloped headhouses, uh to private roof decks that you see there on the roof, and then um so these would be the elevations here, so you can see the step right there, um, just to make it as as small as possible. Um, and then in section, this is that sloped headhouse right here, so you can see the, it would be a uh like a daylighter uh glass hatch to get up to a the roof decks. Uh, I I mean, that's, that's basically the extent of of the changes, we just, we wanted, you know, we heard your your concerns, and we wanted to kind of do our best to accommodate the neighbors and the zoning board's uh comments to try to get something uh, you know, a little bit smaller, that that would be acceptable, so.
Thank you, Jim, and that's, that's really our presentation of the revisions, um, um, the, as I indicated, the site engineer, um, I believe he may also be here, if there's any questions about that. We did, however, appear before the Conservation Commission and obtained an order of conditions related to the um the floodplain um request, and uh you know, otherwise, um, I think have revised the plans to respond to the comments.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cabas, any questions?
Uh, you not at this time.
Okay, uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no questions at this time, thank you.
Mr. Ray Dell?
Uh, looks like they hit on everything we requested.
And Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
Okay, uh, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor, first of all? Anyone want to speak in favor? Raise your hand, a star, a star nine? Anyone?
Not seeing any hands, if you'd like to speak, raise your hand, turn on your screen. Um, and the reactions, there should be a virtual hand raise button as well.
Third call? While our part of the hearing closed, anything change on, no?
Comments are made, gentlemen.
Comments are made, gentlemen, same, uh, is there anyone opposed or undecided? First of all? Second call?
One hand, Citizen Rotoffel.
Citizen Rotoffel. Go ahead, John. Could you take a note, John, please? John? Mr. Cabas, could you give me notes?
I swear, tell truth, tell truth, that's about the truth, I hope you die.
I do.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question, Chairman Aitken, um, is this residential A or residential B?
B.
Okay, then I'm 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 neutral, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else, third call, Counselor McCarty?
Uh, thanks, Chairman, uh, no, I think that they um James, Ed and and company uh um went to the letter of the law there with what you guys had stated and what a few other people had stated, it's a it's a resby area on that entire side
Yep.
of C Street, so, you know, it's a variety pack, and and some of the houses, uh, the smaller houses there, they they do need some help, and um
Yeah.
you know, uh, this is gonna replace a home that um um probably in in the area where it probably got beat up pretty bad too in 2018 in in the in the storms, um, so uh the change with the elevation and everybody uh paying attention to to that on C Street, which will always, always happen, I think, is um perfect, I think they were respectful to the neighbor next door to the left, uh and and by by shifting it a little bit, I think we went from 50 to 37, if I if I caught that, um, 50 feet, 37 feet.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, you give them a little room, I was just wondering, I couldn't see it quick enough, uh i- is the height 31 or 32 feet somewhere in that vicinity?
Uh, let me look, I know it's under what was.
32, I think it calls.
Give or take, yeah.
Yeah.
And and you know, it's, so, uh, you know, it's, it's it fits in that, in that resby, it fits with that apartment houses to the right of them, and with other dwellings that are sprinkled around on resby. Um, I know that uh, one of the things I'm trying to do, and I know the board's trying to do, is is keep some of the developers down a little bit in regards to um items that'll pop up on on C Street, but some of the single-family homes on the other side, uh by going through the process of raising them up, et cetera, are 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 taller than than the um than the two-family that's on the the resby side, so I um, I think they've done a good job, I think it fits, thank you very much.
Thank you. Last call? While our part of the hearing closed, uh I I I know you had to make this work with what we had in uh I want to thank you for bringing them that down the fourth floor, I just don't think should have been there at all, uh, even the hatch, could have put maybe a flat hatch, but it only brings it up a little bit, uh and I understand it's an easier walkout too, so good for the older folk, I guess, to get up on the roof deck. Uh, I'll be voting in favor, I I I think you guys did what we asked. Cabas?
I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Aye, likewise.
Mr. Ray Dell?
In favor.
Mr. Himmel?
In favor.
Have a motion, please, Mr. Cabas.
Mr. Chairman, Madam number 21 dash 15, Virtual Capital Group LLC for a special permit floodplain variance to remove the existing single-family home house, and constructing side-by-side duplex-style building on the premises number 651 C Street, I make a motion to grant a special permit and the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing on Madam Court, can I have a voice call?
Michael Bayes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Brian Rudell?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Marty Aitken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I'm gonna skip one, go to 136, Counselor, Virtual Capital on 599, I know it's the same set of plans, but
It is.
Uh, is there anything different down there that we don't know about, I know I've seen them a lot of, every day, twice a day I see it, so uh you're up, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, Edward Fleming on behalf of Virtual Capital, um, this is exactly the same proposal, what we did uh in light of the comments and concerns that were raised by the board at the last meeting during for the 651, um, Mr. Bailey adopted the same revisions to the plans. The difference, I guess, on this is is this site's a little bit smaller at a 40, at 48 um 86 instead of 5,000, but it's it's it otherwise almost exactly the same. Um, you know, and and um I think that um it also fits the site um as, you know, like this particular one does, and it it is, I think it's addressing the same concerns that you raised. I'll let Mr. Bailey kind of walk you through the plans, but you'll see, I think, you know, mostly exactly the same, but Jim?
Exact set of plans like here, but I just want to know on your lot lines, what are you coming off these lot lines on this one? Got seven, what?
Jim, you just want to, you want to highlight those those kind of issues, but I think it's just the setbacks are very similar.
Yeah, if uh if if I can share my screen again, it's it's actually not the exact same, I mean, the the floor plans are, let me share real quick, hold on. One second, bear with me, okay. Okay, so if you're seeing this, um I mean, o- overall, the dimensional setbacks and all the calculations are exactly the same, the floor plan is the same. Um, the width of the site is the same, and then one of the side property lines is, I think, 100, just over 100, and then the other property line is um 90, I think 95 or so, so uh the the back is is just a skew a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, the the difference in in this project is the the soil conditions are different, so it's gonna be up on concrete pier, so it's not gonna be an enclosed garage, uh, so no garage doors, it's all gonna be open like this, and then we just esthetically, we wanted to kind of differentiate it from 651, so uh, the materials are the same, but it's just a different configuration, different kind of railings and details, uh, just so it doesn't look like a, a, you know, duplicate copy quarter mile down the street.
Right.
Um, so the only other uh zoning uh relief would be the rear setback, because of this askew uh property line,
Right.
the corner would be uh over the rear setback slightly, so uh the green space is is reduced a little bit. Uh, but the FAR is the same, the front side setbacks, everything else is is essentially the same.
All right, thank you, uh. Oh, yeah, did did uh, did you get a hold of Mrs. Austin?
Uh, I didn't have any but any conversation with the Miss A- Mrs. Austin, um.
I got, got a message for you to call, uh, Counselor, are you there? Yeah, Dave?
Yeah, I'm here, um, yeah, I gotta, I I I know they they uh went forward with plans, but um Mrs. Austin and I have become very um friendly with multiple phone calls on this, and um one of the things that uh Jay Duka, uh Director of Inspection Services, we spoke to a gentleman one morning, I was in the office about contacting Lillian to talk about uh the change, as you guys, or if you don't recall, but if you guys recall, it was a single-family going in there a couple of years ago, it didn't happen, I guess the guy must have sold it. Uh, the Austons have been there a long time, and they were okay with that, and um the dimensions and the footage away from their house, um, as everyone's familiar with this site, to the left are the Austons, and the right um, you know, is is more towards that um, that condo unit that's there that's a little bit further away, so our concern was the, was the Austin side of the house, we had asked, and I don't know if it was Jim or or somebody through Jay Duka's office to contact Lillian Austin and have a conversation about this, and I haven't seen uh any plans, and I know that Jay's on vacation, but as of a few days ago, when I talked to Jay, Jay had not seen this, so we were both concerned about um what this layout was gonna be, and I know that if the answer was no on talking to Lillian Austin, that we had told Lillian and her husband that, you know, we weren't gonna make a move until we had a discussion with the developer to make sure they at least had a warm fuzzy about what was going in, it's the first time I'm seeing this also.
All right, these came out like almost two weeks ago.
Yeah, and I don't know why Jay wouldn't have seen them, but um.
You know what happens in here, I mean, it's a man, or there's a packet that goes in his desk with 20 other packets, and everyone's doing 90 miles an hour trying to catch up.
Yeah, I think we owe the Austons uh as the, as pretty much the loaner butter to this, um, you know, uh uh their two cents to talk to not only us, but the developer.
So what do you, what do you want to do, Counselor, what are you looking?
Well, I'd like to push it off and have a meeting with the Austons and have a conversation that I thought was taking place between the developer and Lillian Austin to kind of give Lillian, you know, an idea of what they were putting in, so um
You know, there's.
I see Lillian, I think, on on the Zoom, but I'm I'm, you know, I I know if uh nobody had reached out to Lillian, then um, she doesn't know about what's going on next door to her, so.
Here's what we'll do, here's what we'll do.
And Mr. Aitken, I apologize, I apologize for that, and and um that, if that was my fault in not getting those plans to you.
No, I don't know who, who or what, I guess, shared about it earlier.
Now, had I known there was a neighbor that had expressed concerns in the past, I'm not as familiar with the background in this site as you are, um, I'm sure my client would be willing and 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 um happy to talk with the Austons like he was with the neighbor next door with 51, so um, I don't have, I know Dimitri's uh here, uh Dimitri, can you um?
Here's what I'd like to do, if I could, Counselor, I'd like to go through the hearing at least tonight.
Yeah.
And then, and then you could request two weeks, and then we could just have a vote, we're gonna meet in 27?
No, we only have one meeting in July, our meeting is August 10.
Get all that time to face, all that time to face.
I gave you vacation.
Would that, would that be too much, Counselor August 10?
I I know that my clients here, um Dimitri Shangin and 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 uh uh Chashinsky, um, I don't know if they can be unmuted and and be able just to, just to uh speak real quickly. Good.
Yeah, you can let him in. Lillian's gonna, she'll get, she'll get to speak too, I just want to know if if we go, these these are the developers, I'm talking about meeting dates.
So Dimitri, I just, did you, you heard the comments, Dimitri's here.
Hi, how you doing, um, my name is Dimitri Shangin, yes, I did hear the comments, we, unfortunately, we haven't had any contact from anybody, obviously would have addressed the, you know, concerns of any abotters or any questions that they might have. Uh, yeah, we would, we will have no opposition, we can schedule, you know, on the next hearing, we'll meanwhile, we'll uh, we'll discuss the, any concerns or questions uh with any of the abotters that would like to talk to.
Great, thank you.
Since since we're here, and we're all here tonight, why don't we go through the hearing a- as we will, and then we can move to the end for vote.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. August 10 will be, uh, okay. So we just heard from the developer, any questions from us, Mr. Cabas?
I just wanted to what, say that I won't be here at the next meeting, and so that it would only be three, a four of you who actually heard this case next time, so I would think August would be better.
Clue in one of the other members if they're gonna be here, as long as they read this transcript and look at the table.
Boy, I have no, I have no question.
No, uh, August, August, August 10. We're gonna make sure.
We can tell Russell.
Yeah, Russell will be here, right, okay, Russell, yeah, I could, I could go.
Why could you, August 10?
August 10th is our next meet, you gonna be here?
Oh, oh, we don't have a, oh, I'm sorry. Confused. Okay, never mind.
Never mind, hey, if you get a vacation this year, two bucks.
Okay.
Never mind.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Ray Dell?
I'm comfortable to hear it.
Mr. Himmel?
No, no questions, I actually like this open design with the parking area better than the other one, so.
Yeah, okay, uh, let me ask the neighbors that are that are on Zoom, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone? Give us a whistle, a handshake, star nine, wave.
Citizen Rotoffel?
Citizen Rotoffel, you're still on the road.
Thank you, John Rotoffel, 62 Grumwell Road, yeah, I was just looking at the um, the Google map of where this is, there's already a big development right next door to that, and the only person that is being harmed, I guess, you said, was Mrs. Austin, but then I noticed there was a the boner and coke sign on her lawn on the picture, so I don't feel bad anymore. Um, so I'm, I'm in favor of this, I I think, I think we have to make sure there's a McCarty sign.
Johnny? Did you mute him?
Yes, he's muted.
Let's get control here, John, don't, don't, don't go there, uh, uh, really. Don't, don't go there, really. Don't, please. Don't go there. I know it was funny, you're trying to be a joke, but don't. Uh, you can be turned back on, John, go ahead.
Um, I'm just pointing out a fact, if you will, look at the Google map picture.
Nothing to do with it, John.
Okay, so I mean, that, that, that is a fact.
No, no, it ain't, but, but it's.
I mean, and, and my, my, my other question, this is residential B, just like the last project?
Right next to the street, like.
I mean, I mean, if this is residential B, I mean, when I looked at the map of the other one, I didn't realize that was next to that big apartment building. And, you know, that actually fits there too. So I mean, that, I, I think this is conforming to the neighborhood. And I think a lot of those single family homes, which are on those street, in the next ten to twenty years are going to be knocked down and there'll be bigger houses that are going to be built there. That's what's been happening, so I'm in favor of this project, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Second call? Third calls?
Not seeing any other hand.
All our party hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW. We view this middle from the above referenced project. Our comments are as follows. The proposed sewer service should be six inch diameter and the proposed water service should be one inch diameter. Number two, provide a shut-off valve and box for water service. Three, provide a clean-out for sewer service. Four, on completion of the project as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints needs to be submitted along with digital file and elevation certificate should be submitted if the property is in the flood zone. Is anything further? Please advise.
Thank you.
Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, but I would like Lillian, if we could let her speak first since she has something turned off. Lillian?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you're up.
Okay.
One second. Lillian, could you please take an oath for Mr. Kavas?
Sure.
Will you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you guard?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, um, I, I've gone over the dimensional regulations and, um, and also the, um, dimensions of the property that they were, it's a, it's a residence B, and I have no problem with that.
Right.
The only thing is, it doesn't really conform to the dimensions for the minimum lot area of units, for one to three units. Um, it's supposed to be six thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
And, and it's supposed to be three thousand a unit. Well.
And then, you know what it is, when they're all cut up like this and they're already I, I, and that's, that's, I know what's happening.
You know what I mean? Um, the, the original proposals, uh, two thousand eighteen, we had no problem. We went to the hearing and we, we're in favor of it. But this is a little bit different in, in the fact that we really, we're in the lowest part of the C Street. And I know this isn't your, you know.
I swear it was four feet.
Concerned about the flooding, but that, that is part of the problem here. We're in the lowest part. I have flooded six years, six times in fifty years. I've, I've seen, and, and in two thousand and eighteen, it was, uh, three days before we could get back on the house. And that's never happened. And I was, my house was built in two thousand, I mean, in nineteen seventy-five, and it was built according to the floodplain, which, you know, would prevent it from flooding, but it didn't. It's just one of those things. So we can live with that, you know. But the thing is, what we kind of live with is if we put in more construction right there, have a bigger, um, area than the one unit, we're going to really be flooded here. I mean, I can't even go out my backyard on beautiful weather, you know? So the thing is, it's just going to take up too much. It's, I understand we have a three condo unit on the other side, but, but the more, the less land we have, the more flooding we're going to have down here. And that was my only concern, if we could, plus, what is the side yard?
What we're going, we're going to.
Marty, tell me what the side yard dimension is on my side. Because originally, he had five and three quarters feet. Did he go to the, 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 the original guy was going to have fourteen feet between my fence and the property. This one, he was going to have five and three quarters. Did he come back to that?
Side, side, where am I?
Side yard.
Yeah.
On the left. Facing the house on the left.
It actually expands from five point seven five to seven point two five. So it actually, because the house comes in on.
But that's not, that's not agreeable for us.
But here's, here's what you have.
He's got to put cement on the side. You can't have, you have to have a porous area. We had to put in, um, the conservation one this last time, put in permeable paving, which we have. I mean, you cement all around there. We're not going to have any green space to.
On this, uh.
And I can talk to, I could speak to the conservation on that. But I want to get on the, you know, the dimensions here. I just, where, where have they increased any, um, space? I mean, did you? Have you decreased it a thousand square feet?
Five, seven, five to seventeen.
No, but I mean, the total area of the building. Originally, it was, uh, what was it? Nine hundred and something square feet?
No, uh.
What was it, nineteen hundred?
Yeah, one second, let me just look it up here. Nine, two. Thirty-two. Sixty-seven, what the hell was that? In nineteen, it's twenty, what do you got here? Twenty-two, twenty-four?
He's got twenty-four hundred square feet?
Looking here.
And I thought it was.
Fifty by, what is this thing?
That's James Bailey.
Yeah, fifty by, no, forty, forty.
Well, forty-seven by thirty-five, I believe, the total.
So is that two thousand square feet? So you really haven't come down on the total, um.
Well, they reduced the size, they reduced the size of the property, the building from the original proposal by about a thousand square feet.
Yeah, but is that because you came down on the height?
Uh, no, 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 it was, that, that was because the building was reduced in some size. Um, and it was pulled in from the property lines.
Yeah, but you only pulled it in, how many, what is it now on the, for my side? Went from five seventy-five to what did you go to?
Seven, two, five.
Seven, yeah, so two feet. I mean, come on, that's a joke.
And it was, it was reduced in length as well. It was reduced.
What, another two feet?
No.
She's looking at the original dimensional format.
No, 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 I'm listening, I haven't got the, the new one. So I'm just trying in my own mind. You just said seven point something feet. It was originally five point seventy-five.
That's why we wanted you to see these new plans and now how, I don't know how that's got.
Well, what we can do is, since this is going to be continued until August tenth, um, this Austin, we're happy to, um, to share these plans in more detail with you and try.
Well, there's nothing, you know, I just think it's a waste of money and time for these guys that are on the board and for the city and for ourselves to have to go to another meeting. We've already, we've been to every hearing that you've had that's been postponed. Nothing's been discussed like at, uh, the other, um, building. So I suggest that we could, we try to resolve it tonight because nothing's going to be done between now and August tenth. You, you're going to sit there and you're going to, and I've been involved in this stuff for many years. And I know what's going to happen. And Marty, I know you guys are doing a great job and you're trying to resolve this the best you can. But, you know, I don't want to see you guys take another week and, and push it all the way back so that it interferes with your vacations and everything else. It interferes with my vacation. So let's try to resolve this tonight. Uh, I think we can.
I don't, I don't think we can.
And you know, when, when you're building, um, you know, you're not supposed to go beyond the footprint of the original building, which, and it, and the only time that you get to, to do that is if there's a discrepancy, if it's, it's got to be a hardship, monetary hardship. It has to be according to the soil shape and geography of the land. There's nothing there that will, you know, constitute. You know, this is, this is, you know what I mean? And I'm not, I'm not against anybody making money, you know? I'm all for it, a business school graduate. But what I'm saying is, I live next door to this building and I'm going to have to live with it. And I'm going to, and people we don't know, they're, they're going to, it could even be renting, it could be tenants. I mean, you know, Quincy is built on communities of, family communities. And people are coming in and they're, they're just taking single family houses and just turning around and putting two families, three families in for single family homes. And, you know, people, and I hate to say it, but people that move in in these condos, they, they come and go, they don't stay, they don't get involved in the community. So I'm going to be glad, I've been putting fifteen years of my life into this community. I love Quincy and, you know, I just, I just want to see the right thing done.
I know.
You know what I mean, Marty?
I know, I know, and here's what we're going to have to do now.
Marty, what's the right set back?
Uh, here, here's what we're going to do. We're going to meet again August tenth. Uh, if anyone else wants to speak, I'm going to let them speak. I want to go down and see it myself, show these set of plans, how it's built on. Uh, but I want the applicant to go down and meet them if they could. And right or wrong, whether she agrees with anything or not, please let her see those plans and explain to her how you built.
You know, Marty, I don't want to even get involved in that because I know it's going to happen. He just, yes, maybe, yeah. We'll go down as.
What I'm here to do is to show you a set of plans.
I know, but I can go down and get them.
Maybe you can change something. Maybe, maybe you still can work out something, you could change something and move something a couple of feet and go this way or that way. Does it be better on one side and the other? Yeah, maybe you can work something out that could work out better for you. Like you say, you're all going to be living there, not me, you.
I'm going to ask him right now. Can you come in to thirteen feet? But on the side. Can you do thirteen feet instead of seven?
You're supposed to be negotiating this right now?
No, we don't have to, but I'm just saying, I'm just questioning, you know?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just saying, that's what I'm looking for.
Mr. Austin, I, I can't really answer that question entirely, but I can tell you that, um, the design of the garage is, is done in the way it is so that it can fit two cars per unit. And they have to have a minimum width requirement in order to fit, fit those cars inside. Um, so I, I, I would have to talk in more detail with my client and his architect and engineer to see if the, if the parking can be designed in a different way to allow them to shrink the size of the, the width of the house to provide you with a better setback. So I can't answer that right away, but we can certainly look at it. And, um, and we have a couple of weeks where we can make some modifications and maybe address some of your concerns like Mr. Akins was talking about.
Okay, now, Ed, is this just, have you reduced this to, uh, to, uh, two floors above the garage?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so that's been reduced.
Right.
Okay. And so what's the height now?
It's, it's, I think it's like thirty-one or thirty-two feet.
Yeah. And is that, is, what, what about the proposed ridge? Because that's usually a little bit more.
This is a flat roof, so it's different.
Oh, flat, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, the properties next door are probably taller because they have a pitched roof.
Yeah, but, yeah, but they also went up another floor. They're up three floors above the garage.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's, uh, let's take the time and we'll, we'll talk. And then hopefully we can, um, we can at least respond to your concerns. Maybe we can make some changes that will, um, make it feel a little bit more comfortable and maybe a little bit further away from your home.
Okay.
All right, great.
I mean, I, you know, we're agreeable people and we want to do the right thing and we don't want to have a problem with this.
Right, so it's worth taking the time, so thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call, all our party hearing closed. Yeah, Counselor?
Yeah, Chairman, thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Fleming and Company for, um, taking the time to, to, to speak and, and, and meet up with Lillian. And I just want to, um, convey a thought that I'll, I'll be talking with Lillian over the next couple of weeks, along with probably Mr. Duka. Um, and we're, we're going to talk a little bit about the, um, the building also. Maybe we can, uh, come up with something that is, uh, agreeable on both sides, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kavas, can I have a motion to move this, uh, August tenth, please?
Mr. Chairman, Amendment number twenty-one dash thirty-six, Rachel Cap of the group LLC for variance special permit flood plain to construct a new side-by-side duplex, uh, duplex-style building, their garage parking on the premises number five sixty-six C Street. I make a motion to extend the hearing to August tenth, just a.
Okay.
Yeah, August tenth.
Seconding?
Yeah, second.
On the motion, seeing none?
Yes, just to be clear, this is being continued for a vote?
Vote.
We're closing the public hearing portion?
Yes.
Mike O'Reilly? Mike?
I'm sorry.
We know.
Call, call, vote, Mike.
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Can I take a nap like he did? Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, Adele?
Yes.
Thank you. John Himmel?
Yes.
Marty Akins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Back to old business, ZBA twenty-one eighteen, John Flatley Company for variance to construct the Center Monopole billboard sign in the premise number one Crown Colony. One Crown Drive, I'm sorry. Uh, is the applicant a representative here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Edward Fleming, again, for the applicant, um, the John Flatley Company. Uh, as you indicated, the property is located at one, uh, Crown Colony Drive in, um, in Crown Colony. But better known, I guess, um, as, uh, an area behind the existing Elevations apartment complex, uh, at the location of the existing, um, billboard sign that advertises the, um, elevation complex that stands there today. Um, we are essentially seeking to replace the signage that exists there today, the static sign that exists there today, with new digital sign, um, that we'll talk about in more detail. Um, the property at Crown Colony is actually zoned industrial A. And industrial A, as you know, Mr. Chairman, um, allows for, uh, the most commercial types uses in the city of Quincy. Um, other areas like, um, like the shipyard and, and other places are, are zoned industrial A. Uh, and Crown Colony, although it's been developed as a office complex and, and now residential with the elevation, it's, it's zoned, it's still zoned industrial A. And obviously, it's, it's, um, it butts the, um, the highway in the rear of the site. Um, hence why we've cho, uh, Mr. Flatley's chosen this particular location for the new, uh, billboard signage. Um, I'm joined tonight by Douglas Richardson, who is the VP of Planning and Acquisition for the John Flatley Company. Um, and Doug's going to talk and show the, um, the, the plans in a little bit more detail in a moment. But if I can just kind of walk through, uh, a few different things, um, in addition to the zoning. We've, uh, we understand the controversy relative to billboards in the city of Quincy and all the communities in the area. And, uh, and Mr. Flatley's been sensitive to ensuring that, um, that not only the city of Quincy have been involved in the discussions of this signage, but also, uh, has participated in a, in a community meeting at the request of Counselor Julia Flaherty, who may be here, uh, joining us tonight. Um, when she called and asked if we could, um, come to a community meeting and share the plans with her community across the highway in Braintree. Because we understand that it's located on the highway, but, but it's also, it may not be visible to a lot of the folks in Quincy, but it may be visible to the folks in Braintree. Um, so we wanted to at, at least have, take the opportunity to talk, talk with them about this signage. We're also aware of the controversies that have occurred down in Weymouth, um, with some of the new billboard signages that, that, that has gone up in Weymouth and how some communities or some areas in, in the city or the town did not have an opportunity to be heard. So we wanted to make sure that we at least went and talked with those folks ac- across the, the highway in Braintree. We also understand that these, um, billboards are particularly sensitive when they, uh, affect residential homes in the area. Um, the billboard, uh, in West Quincy, which set the precedent for way, the way, uh, billboards are going to be handled in the city of Quincy moving forward, um, was, was not the appropriate location for a number of reasons. And most specifically, it hung out over a, a, a residential community in, in the location. Uh, that, that residential community. Uh, that, that residential community is within feet, hundred feet, uh, of that, uh, particular billboard. Whereas the closest residential neighbors to this particular proposal are more in the range of 1,500 feet across the highway. Um, and, um, and across, uh, mature, uh, growth and, and other things. So, you know, it was, uh, it was important when Mr. Flatley looked at the opportunity to, to, to install the signage. That he did so in an area that he believed from his review of the information and his team's review of the information would have the, the least impact on the residential community that, that surrounded it. Um, so with that caveat, well, I just wanted to, I wanted to share that with you. Um, I know that you'll hear tonight, um, and certainly from some of the neighbors' comments that, um, Noreen shared with me. Uh, they raised concerns about zoning and whether or not this is even appropriately zoned. Well, again, one, it's in a zone, it's in a, an industrial A zoning district. Two, although it is, although billboards are prohibited in the city. Um, the city council back when the ordinance was enacted, um, authorized the zoning board of appeals in the city of Quincy to issue use variances in the city in all districts. Uh, they later, then after the controversy related to the beyond the billboard sign, I'll call it that, in West Quincy. Um, enacted a provision that, that no variances could be issued, however, what they didn't, what they didn't do is they didn't change the underlying authority that was granted to the zoning board of appeals and, and hence. When we looked at this and we talked about, to other city officials about this sign. The agreement and the understanding was, well, let's present it to the zoning board of appeals and let the zoning board, uh, hear this matter. Furthermore, um, I think it's important for the zoning board and all the neighbors to understand is that this sign is not permitted by this board. This board simply allows the matter to move forward to the outdoor advertising commission or committee at the state level, and the state, not the cities, permit these signs. And they will have an additional hearing where all parties, including Quincy and Weymouth and Braintree and other communities that may be affected, have the ability to be heard and they'll take into consideration things that will be raised tonight about safety. About lighting and other things, um. So I just wanna kinda highlight that because I think it's important to understand that all we're asking the board to do tonight is to grant the variance to allow this matter to move forward to the state level. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, first, I'd like to turn this over to, um, Mr. Douglas Richardson to kinda walk through the plans. And what we did, um, and just very briefly, what we did is, um, initially when we met with Counselor Palmucci initial neighborhood meeting, we, we, um, at his request, we, we provided or obtained and created, or Mr. Richardson did, some vignettes or visuals of what the sign would look like from, uh, from areas in Quincy, and what we showed them is that you will not be able to see this sign from a residential neighborhood in Quincy, whether it's over on Independence Ave or on Center Street. And, and we can show, he'll show those plans. But then when I, we met with Counselor Flaherty, she also asked if we would provide some additional visuals, and that's exactly what Mr. Richardson did. He prepared those, and he did even more than that, he actually, um, utilized the Google Maps that allowed him to move around the area and, um, and, and not, and respond to, to neighbors' concerns about what it might look like from their own home. Um, and he can, he can, he can do that, uh, through that program, so, uh, if I could turn this over to Doug real quick, thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I need you to give me access to the one that says Douglas Richardson. I'm gonna share the screen.
Go ahead, do you have it?
I think I'm there. Okay. Okay. Can you see that?
No. New?
Yeah.
Here.
So, here is the elevation apartments. This is the, uh, on-ramp to both, uh, 93 and 95. And this is the Route 3 northbound. We are placing the sign as, uh, Ed Fleming has stated next to the existing. And in fact, it's a replacement of the existing sign that's there. So, a car traveling northbound on Route 3, the next slide shows what you will see in place of replacement of this sign here. It is 35 feet tall, and the reason why we, uh, selected that height is that the existing elevation apartments are about 53 feet tall. So the sign is no taller than the apartments that already exist. This is just a detail of the construction of the sign, it's a single pole. And it will not exceed the height to the top at 35 feet. The next two images, uh, took a photo from the entrance of Crown Colony on Center Street.
Yep.
Um, as well as over on Independence Ave. And you can see by these lines of sight, there's at least two to three buildings that are blocking those views over at elevation. This is the first view on Independence Ave, and this is an actual screen, uh, photo. And the sign itself, which is not seen, is located where that white arrow would be. Out of the building. This is at Center Street, entrance to Crown Colony. The second line, uh, actually over here, and you can see that the buildings block the view. We additionally have, which I can share at the request of the Town of Braintree.
Now, that's from ground level, that's not from those apartments that are across the way there, correct?
That is correct, I, I did that from ground level. Um, and once I go through the slideshow, I can, uh, refer to the program that Ed was, uh, discussing about the sign. So, we looked at multiple points along Common Street. Um, also, I looked at, uh, Dub Circle, Headland Ave, Worthington Circle. Uh, as well as the location at the church and even the bridge over on Independence, uh, which is Washington Street. So the first one is Dub Circle, and looking over, you can clearly see that, uh, you, you can't see the buildings or the signage. This is from Headland Ave, the end of Headland Ave, again, uh, both vegetation and grade. Uh, Washington Street exit is, is about, uh, 25, 30 feet higher than the elevation of, uh, Common Street. Uh, this is the end of Worthington, you can see some of the elevation buildings. But the sign is all the way over where the yellow arrow is placed.
Now, what happens in the winter, so?
Uh, that's the question. Well, in the winter, you still have the grade changes between, uh, Common Street and, uh, the area that the sign is proposed.
All right.
Um, this is located at the, uh, the Greek church. Um, as you can see, the elevation buildings are peeking out here, the sign is placed over here. And then Independence Ave, uh, on the bridge is showing that the sign would be at this location. Now, the item that I wanted to show here. This is actually, oop, I'll move this over. There we go. This is an actual three dimensional model. Oop. There we go. Of which you can see, this is Route 3 northbound. There's the existing sign, this is the actual proposed billboard to scale. And we have the ability to be able to shift around and see different vantage points of the sign. It is a very, in fact, I could tip up. It is a very limited view on Route 3 northbound. After you come out of the bridge. There we go. One more second to let it catch up. The sign is placed on an angle to the view of the roadways. There is only a 90 degree ability of, of the light, because they have these, um, shades now, which are like blinders on a horse on the pixels. So that it limits the amount of, uh, bleed from the sides of the sign. So you've got, uh, just a narrow window from this point coming out across here and coming along here. So even if there are no, uh, leaves in the trees, the light is cut off and only seen from that triangle of, of view. There we go. And again, as we discussed. There are multiple buffers, trees and grade changes as we work our way over towards the, uh, the Common Street area.
In, uh, the homes in Braintree won't see that at all.
We have done multiple perspectives and you will not see it. That, but the photos are actual photos taken at those locations shown.
Now, you go to Deco up in those apartments, are they gonna see the whole back of that sign?
Deco, okay, hold on. So if I come down
towards Deco and I'm well over the roof of Deco, you will not see that sign at all. Can't be seen.
Yep, there, that, that's an interactive 3D model. And I'm higher than the roof of Deco.
Right.
Also to emphasize, this is a one-sided sign, not two-sided. We're not looking to do anything for the southbound traffic.
No, I was wondering if the sign would be. 50 by, 35 feet high.
I apologize, what was the question?
None, none, I was just wondering if they could see the whole, the whole structure of it.
The actual sign as I tip up is right there, you're looking at the edge of it, so there'll be no light bleed.
And Mr. Chairman, just to, just to highlight, you know, you, I, I'm not sure if it was you that made the comment about the, the winter weather and then the, the tree, the, uh, leaves, and I know that, uh, the folks in, in Braintree also talked about that concern. But again, I think it's, what, what has to be highlighted here is that, I mean, I guess, just looking at this picture alone. We're talking, first of all, the, the closest property's gotta be 1,500 to 2,000 feet away in Braintree. And it's down significantly from the site, so even though if the trees up, up, uh, on, you know, the leaves on the, on the trees are gone. The structure of the tree itself or the growth around it will block a lot of the view of, of this particular signage, and I know some folks, they, when we were at the Braintree meeting, they showed a picture of a, a woman's house. How she talked about how she could see the elevation or, or she could see the elevation from her home. But that's, but again, the sign is, the sign is actually located kind of further up away from that area and, and it shouldn't impact her view, um, and I know the concern was about the lighting of the sign and, and, and things of that nature at the nighttime. Uh, we, we can't say for certainly that no one's ever gonna see the sign from, uh, any property in Braintree, but what, what we can say is, is that it's been designed in a way that we don't believe it's gonna have a, a significant impact and it was done that way, um, with substantial effort on the part of Mr. Richardson and, uh, and his team. So that's our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, I mean, I have a few questions down the road, but, uh, let's, let's see with the public, does anyone on the board have any questions right now or they wanna wait?
I, I have one question. And that is, uh, this is gonna be lit up at night, I assume, and it's going to be, uh, the gonna be third parties who are gonna be buying ads or putting ads on this billboard. Uh, I also assume that like the most of the ones I've seen, they'll be flashing different people all the time. Other words, here's a, this commercial, there's another one.
You're talking about the time in between, between advertisements?
Ed, you want me to cover that?
Yeah, and, and I'll just, you know, yeah, you can, you can certainly cover that, Doug.
Okay, so it's highly regulated by the State, uh, of Mass Transportation, um, the Outdoor Advertising, um, Board. The mass. I disagree with that, but that's another story, I guess. Go ahead.
Well, the shortest span is 10 seconds per change. It has to be a quick change, not a transition. Uh, the lighting levels, as Ed mentioned, are restricted to point a third of a foot candle. And to put that in perspective, that's a third less than a normal parking lot, uh, lighting. Also, that has to be measured from a distance of, uh, 500 feet away, so, you know, it's a very dim amount. Uh, and as well as a 10 second transition, uh, we are required to have amber alerts. Uh, also 15 hours of, um, public service announcements, which we absolutely will work with the city of Quincy and Braintree, uh, for public events and, and notifications and, and different, uh, um, items that would be, uh, you know, beneficial to the, uh, to the cities.
15 hours, 15 hours, what was that?
It's 15 hours per month.
15 per month, okay.
Yeah.
Public, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, um, I, I, I have comments, but I'll hold them, I'm, I'm, I'd like to hear what the public has to say.
All right, uh, Mr. Raydell?
My only question I had, was there, is there 24/7 hours of operation? I don't think I heard that.
Um, yes, it is 24/7.
And Mr. Himmel?
I'm having a hard time believing that if it's gonna be a very dull lit sign that anybody's gonna see it, doesn't make any sense.
Well, it wasn't, it's not about dull lit, it's about the shine of the lights, uh, that they can, they can't, they're not, uh, permitted, um, because of the ambient lighting to shine, uh, a certain distance.
Don't find any light, they can't.
And then at night, at night, I think, Doug, you can talk about this, there's a, there's a dimming, dimming mechanism on the lights as well. Um, that, um, during certain hours.
Yeah, it's kinda like your car, as soon as it gets dark, the actual lights in your dashboard dim, they're actually lit higher during the day, I understand that.
Correct.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr.. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? First call? Second call, anyone?
Not seeing any hand.
Third call, call up, how the hearing close, how response?
I have no department comments.
No department comments, right. Is there anyone opposed or undecided?
And?
Julia Flaherty?
Julian, if you could please take an oath, please, Mr. Cavaz?
Julia, Julia Flaherty, then Stephen, and then Angela.
All right, if the three of yous could please put them on and we can do all three oaths at the same time, if you could, please, Jonathan, let them speak. Angela and Stephen too.
All right, they're all unmuted.
Okay.
Be fair to the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
I do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaz. Julia, you have the, uh, floor, go ahead.
Thank you, um, my name is Julia Flaherty and I'd like to speak to you tonight on behalf of the numerous Braintree residents who are opposed to this proposal. Um, the proponents of the billboard have made a case that it is not going to significantly impact Braintree, but I mean, that it will not significantly impact Quincy, but it most certainly will impact Braintree. It's gonna shine directly into Braintree. It's going to shine directly into Braintree. And if you look at the topography of the area, the reason the elevation apartments are called the elevation apartments is because they are elevated above the surrounding area. And that means that the sign is high up, and although if you look at the Braintree properties that are right up against the Washington Street exit, they're below grade and they may not be able to see the sign. But if you pull yourself back and find yourself in a home that's built on a higher hill or upstairs in a home, you most certainly will see this sign. And you will see it more in the wintertime when the leaves are off the trees, and you will see it, but you will see it every night because the light on that sign is going to be incredibly bright. You can see it from the top of Walnut Street, even if you don't live in a home on Walnut Street, you can see it from the top of Common Street where it intersects with Washington Street, and any number of residents living in the neighborhood can be impacted. It will impact our property values, it will impact our quality of life, and, you know, no digital billboard belongs that close to a residential neighborhood. And I really hope that Braintree neighborhoods are not irrelevant to your consideration. But I also have some things to say about the impact this will have on the safety of those who are driving through the corridor. It's already a fairly stressful place to drive because everyone on the road there has to be focused on getting into the correct lane as they approach the north-south split. You don't have a lot of time to make those choices. People are going fast, no one wants to make a mistake that will put them going in the right direction, but billboards create a driving distraction that causes accidents. And what typically happens is that you, a driver looks at the billboard instead of the road because that's precisely what the billboard is designed to do. It's designed to draw your eye away from the road, away from what you're supposed to be focused on. And it draws the driver's eye, and then the car moves in the direction that the driver is looking. That's just the natural way of things, that's why you're supposed to keep your eyes on the road. And when the driver looks away and the car follows, what it creates is drift. So the car drifts into the next lane, and then you get a rear-end collision or sometimes a side swipe collision. And the speeds of drivers in that area are great enough that those accidents will be serious and can be deadly. So, and I also, I did a little math on this, and what I found was that if you are a car that's moving at 45 miles per hour, which I thought was a conservative estimate for the area, and you spare a three-second glance at that sign, because maybe you're passing it at the time when it changes, and that just absorbs your attention for longer, then you will lose in those three seconds about the space of half a football field to make your lane choices safely. And I think that this is an area where this billboard is particularly inappropriate because not only do we have, you know, the problem with people who may drift into lanes going at fairly high speeds, but you also have people who are going to look at the billboard, lose ground to make their driving decisions safely, and then make hasty choices to try and solve their problem quickly before they wind up going in the wrong direction on 93 or heading towards 95. You don't want to do that. So you have both of those problems in that location. And I, you know, I guess it's legal to put it there, but I think it's very, very ill-advised. So, you know, those are the two concerns that residents make to me all the time. They're very worried about this. So I'm here tonight to ask you to uphold what really is your own zoning regulations and decline in the billboard.
Thank you. And you're up?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Address, please.
I'm sorry?
Name an address for the record.
Oh, it's Angela Kavanaugh, and I live at 82 Worthington Circle in Braintree. I am on this meeting to voice opposition to the billboard. I believe that this will be visible from my house. It's hard to tell now because there's leaves on the trees and it's convenient that all the pictures that were shown have leaves on the trees because that's really only the case for six months out of the year. But I do believe we'll be able to see this. I think everybody going up Common Street, people that live on Common Street at the top of Common Street, will be able to see it because you can see the other sign from there right now. And I just want to echo the concerns that, you know, seems like they went to great lengths to make sure that Quincy residents would not be able to see this billboard, but alas, I think Braintree residents will be. And you guys are the ones to be able to make this decision, and I just ask that you make the right one for us all. And also, I just want to mention that I really don't see what the upside of this is for the community. It's not something that's needed. You know, the apartments were built since we've lived here, and it's in our view, but I don't mind because, you know, housing's needed and it serves a purpose. But a big lit-up sign, really, I don't see any good for the community, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve? Matthew?
Thank you.
Record, please.
Steve Shawshia, Hollis Ave in Braintree, District 2, Town Councilor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to echo the opposition from the previous two speakers. You know, first, I think that Councilor Flaherty is right. There's a real concern about traffic here. If you just look up safety of digital billboards, you'll find all kinds of studies, and the only ones that suggest there might not be a traffic safety issue are done on long stretches of highway. None of them, there is not a single study that provides any evidence that a digital billboard will not distract drivers at an intersection like the 93 interchange. It's an area of multiple changing lanes, everybody's familiar with. A study from MIT said unequivocally, these digital signs do distract drivers. It's just a question of how much. And at that particular intersection, I think there's a real safety concern that I hope this board will consider. Now, the other thing is that what Mr. Fleming showed us was a lot of static images of a billboard, similar to what would be there today. But the issue is not the billboard, it's the fact that it's a digital 24-hour-a-day lighted billboard. That will be seen from a lot of areas of Braintree. Those lights radiate, everybody's seen them, you've heard all the controversy from towns like Weymouth that had signs like this go in and the impact that it's had on neighbors. It will affect residents. And I think it's, you know, it's unfortunate that they've chosen to present this as if, as you know, the previous speaker said, there are always going to be trees there. But the fact of the matter is, when it's winter and when it's 8 o'clock at night and you're trying to get your kids to go to bed and you have to keep the blinds closed because there are lights coming in your window, it will impact residents. And finally, my last point would be that if I learned one thing from my own time on the Braintree ZPA, it's that it is the petitioner's responsibility to give the board evidence that this will not harm neighbors. And what I heard from Mr. Fleming is a lot of, Mr. Flatley believes, and from his research, he thinks, but they've provided nothing that would indicate that this is not going to be a safety hazard, that it's not going to impact residents in Braintree due to the lighting, not necessarily the location. And I think, I think they've failed to meet the standard that they're required to meet, and I hope that this board will consider that and vote against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Associate. Ian Mahoney, could you please? Ian?
Yep, I'm right here.
You're up.
All right, thanks. First of all, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, Ian Mahoney. I'm going to be speaking both as a councillor at large and also as a resident of West Quincy. And I have received many, many phone calls, and it might be because of the impact that we had from the billboard at Biomi's going up, but it's also because the city of Quincy made it very clear that we do not want billboards anymore in the city of Quincy. And I realized that it was presented by Mr. Fleming as something that because it's in an industrial zone and it's not going to impact supposedly Quincy, but it does impact Quincy because billboards do not have an economic value for the residents of the city of Quincy. It doesn't make the area more valuable, it actually depresses the area. And that's a fact, if you do the research as well. And I also did research in regards to the digital aspects of it, and I agree with my neighbors in Braintree, they articulated it very, very well, and I'm thanking them for being here tonight because digital advertisements, especially in that section of the highway, would be extremely dangerous, and I would hate to see that happen. And finally, the issue that I'm having the most with is that when the presentation was done by Mr. Fleming, he said other city officials said that they, you know, that they should come to this board and present their evidence to this board and you should be making the decision, even though the city council, not while I was there, but the city council voted to change the zoning laws because of the issues that we had. Now, I live in West Quincy and I live pretty far away from where that billboard is, and that light that I can see from my neighborhood, I can see the light from the current Biomi billboard. So I can imagine that even though they're saying that light won't project over to Braintree, that it will. And this isn't going to be a benefit for Quincy, and when you talk about the 15 hours of potentially public service announcements we can have, or the fact that we can have amber alerts, somehow that makes it a benefit for anybody in the city of Quincy, that's not true either. So I just think it's very disingenuous to suggest that other city officials are saying that you should go to this board and say that this is the right thing for this particular billboard in this particular area when in fact the whole city has said, we don't want them in where it is now and we don't want them up or down the corridor of Quincy. And once you start with one and you say yes, you'll see them popping up everywhere. As you all have driven on the highway and you have seen clusters of billboards, that's not what I want to see for Quincy. So I would really ask this board to take into consideration what the city council asked for in those zoning regulations, and I will work with Councilwoman Mucho to make sure we go back and adjust those zoning laws so that no other billboards can come again. So I really ask for this to be rejected and not let this happen. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, councillor, and thanks for speaking up there.
Yep.
Is there, Citizen Rotafeld, you're under oath.
John Rotafeld again. I got to shave while Mr. Fleming was speaking so long, thank you very much. Basically, I'm going to agree with what everyone else is saying here. You know, I was just looking through while everyone was talking there. I drive all the time down Route 24 from Quincy to Route 95. I drive all the time from Quincy and I go south down to Plymouth. There's not any billboards when you go south on Route 3 down to Plymouth. But when you start going down Route 24, well, there's none that I see on billboards when you go down that go down to, let's say, you know, like I said, until the Duxbury exit, exit 11. But as you start going down Route 24, you do see them, you see them every mile until you start getting to the nicer cities, which is past exit 16, exit 15. I lived in Vegas for a couple years. The symbol of a billboard, they're in the towns that are the towns you don't want to live in. We want to get people to come to move to Quincy. We don't need a billboard that's going to discourage people to come to Quincy to say, please move to Quincy. Now, this is an ask where we already have a billboard a little bit up the street that we shouldn't have let happen many years ago. I'm not sure how that one got in near Curry Hardware. And now we're going to have a location where there's two right in a row. And I can tell you, I know who's going to advertise on this. I don't want to see chair relief on this billboard. I don't want to see alcohol ad on this billboard. You know, it's basically saying, welcome to, you know, you're going to come up the South Shore, and we're ruining Quincy. And Mr. Flatley has done very well with the city of Quincy. We gave him special privileges to build all those buildings up there. Why does he need to make a couple extra dollars off of advertising from a billboard? It's just, it's not fair. And we got to stop being fair to the people. And, you know, the people who are just here from the city of Braintree, things in Quincy don't work like they work in the city of Braintree. I got six years of video to prove this. Council Mahoney, thank you for standing up because we need more people to come here and stand up for the people because they have silenced the people. The people are afraid to speak, they no longer want to speak. But no one speaks anymore in Quincy. It's really sad. We need more people from Braintree to help us in Quincy. Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. Thank you very much. Now, you will watch what will happen. And, you know, there's a very good opportunity that, you know, everything that we say gets listened to, but when we're talking about right now, they're asking for a variance. So this goes back to what is the hardship of why you are granting them a variance? And that's all I'm going to ask you, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Reynolds?
Joe Reynolds. Mr. Cavais, could you please?
Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth shall help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Name an address for the record, please.
Joseph Reynolds, 159 Western Avenue, Braintree, Mass.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to add a comment here, and I want to thank the previous speakers for their articulation of the issue, so I'm not going to belabor some of those points, although I share them. I just wanted to add a little bit of perspective here. I too have had some opportunity to work as a government board member in the Braintree Planning Board and had the opportunity to hear an application for a billboard along Wood Road and Route 128, Route 93 South. Those, the considerations that get raised here today are very apt to safety, quality of life, and I just, you know, wanted to emphasize due diligence here of the applicant in making sure that they present a full picture, as complete a picture, of the potential impacts of this billboard, particularly along the North Braintree neighborhoods, particularly Common Street, Washington Street. And I know there are a number of other streets that I could name and provide lists for that could give you a sight line from the residential homes, the second stories of homes, bedroom views of this location that are not being represented today in this applicant's presentation. So I just wanted to emphasize that due diligence, and I could provide a list of other locations that would be adversely impacted by the light, this 24/7, 365 days a year operation of this digital billboard and the glare that would definitely have an adverse impact on the quality of life for many Braintree, North Braintree residents. And I also wanted to just emphasize Councilor Flaherty's comments to the safety on the highway, having an opportunity, as I mentioned previously, to study and to have the opportunity to perform due diligence on the impacts of digital billboards as they pertain to highway traffic and the safe operation of vehicles. Traffic heading northbound on Route 3 into that major interchange, you're also navigating a bend in the road as well as the ability to try to navigate and keep your eye on the road, which particular lane that you are going to take. And that does not include that all the other operators at the same time are presented with that same challenge. So there is no reason for us to create a hazard in this particular location. So I stand firmly against this proposal, and I thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, sir. That was Mr. Reynolds.
Yep.
Who's next? Anyone else opposing undecided?
Not seeing any other hand.
Third, all our party hearing closed. I'm going to tell you, I'm not a fan of billboards and I always thought they ruined the city. It's my opinion, personal opinion. I'm not here tonight for personal opinion, but. There are forty letters here, forty letters, a letter from the mayor of Braintree, asking us not, residents around- letter from this, from the mayor of Braintree, asking us not, residents around this city, Braintree, not to let this happen. So, guys, uh, here's what I'm going to ask you before we even discuss this. Just, I just want to make a few comments. To be fair to the applicant, uh, I'd like to come back a month from now, August 10th. I think, uh, I got forty letters here. I really would like to read them. I would like to take the time to read what these people are saying. Because some of the comments are this grossly oversight monstrosity of a lot of stuff that goes into these letters and where they live and what's going on. And there's counselors here, there's, uh, city councils here, there's counselors at large in Quincy here. Letters. I think, I think this stuff should be, probably all of us should read these. The copy shall probably, I know I'm going to put more work on her that she doesn't need because she's overworked. But if I have to, I'll copy these myself. These have to go to each board member here tonight and read these. It's, uh, and I know how you guys feel about it because you've been here a long time.
Marty, can I ask one question?
He could scan these right to you.
No. Apparently not.
Sorry. She could scan into a sheet.
Marty, can I ask, Marty, can I ask?
You're still behind me. Brian, go ahead.
Can I ask something for, for the next meeting? I just, and I'm sure, uh, the applicant did their due diligence for the city. But can we just get a, something from either the solicitor or something that, I mean, I'm confused as to how we made a home rule, basically, uh, zoning change, yet we're hearing a case for something that we specifically excluded from happening again.
Because they didn't see the other part of the law, which Emma Horni said she's going to work on with, uh, Brian Pomucci and someone and the rest of the.
I, I understand that, but I, I don't, I, I understand what people were telling me, but I haven't seen any.
What I can add to that, too, um.
I just want, I just want to see something. I want to see something that says why I'm voting on this tonight, you know?
I don't know that I can do. I don't know that I can vote.
No one has a right to speak. Please, hold up. We're talking in deliberations now. Please.
All right.
Uh, can you mute everyone except for the board, please? I don't know how that happened.
I just want, like, from the solicitor or somebody, just somebody saying like, hey, yeah, this can be voted on even though we have this, you know?
Right, right. I will, I will make sure that gets done this week. Uh, I'll meet with them and we'll make sure we get a letter or a phone call. And I'll make sure you get a copy of these. But you're right, Brian, that, that would be nice, too.
Yeah, because it just makes no sense to me. I mean, I, I, I kind of get it. Like, I get the concept of it. Oh, because we could still have a change of use. But, um, you know, when we put a specific, and, and maybe we just didn't make the language strong enough, and that's all I want to be told. Like, hey, the language wasn't strong enough, you know, you just left it open for this. That's, I, I just want to be told one way or the other.
You're right. You're right. That will be done. Uh, comment, Mr. Kavais?
Uh, well, I, I don't have any comments right now. I, I, I'm not happy with this idea. I think that stretch a road is something I try to avoid.
Yeah.
Because it is so confusing, especially with traffic coming out of, of Crown Colony, going onto the highway, uh, people coming from the south, people already thinking about how am I going to get this lane? And where am I going to go?
Yep.
Uh, people crossing, people who do it every day, going, you know, 60 miles an hour, and people who don't know what they're doing at 30. I think it's a terrible place for it.
Yeah. And, and I, I equate billboards to texting. I do. It's taking your eyes off the road for a second. And you know what's comments made tonight? Where's the upside for Quincy? Where's the upside? I don't know.
And, and I also, though it's not part of my job, I know, but I'm concerned about our neighbors, too. We should be good neighbors.
Correct.
And, um, citizens of Quincy aren't going to get anything out of it. And citizens of Braintree may have trouble. And.
Mr. O'Brien?
I had me convinced. I'm sorry.
Mr. O'Brien?
I, I have the same feelings about the distraction to the drivers.
Yep.
I'll just leave it at that at this point.
Uh, uh, no, um, Mr. Raydell.
Mr. Hemel.
Where is he? He dropped off.
He's right there.
Not on my screen no more. You're in this.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I drive on that interchange every single morning on my way to Route 24. Uh, it, it's, it's a nightmare for three hours and it's worse coming home. I can't imagine anything worse than a digital billboard up on that hill. And on top of it, you're right. What, what is the advantage for Quincy? We're going to be known of the, the city of signs and cement and the negative impact on the town of Braintree, I think is terrible.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, if we want to, if we want to wait till August 10th, um, I, I'm certainly not going to feel any better about it. But, uh, I think we should cut to the chase, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to, there was, there was a good thing brought up from Mr. Raydell. And I want to talk to, I want to talk to the city board and let him give me his two cents and we can make sure the board knows exactly what that little glitch was. Then we might be able to fix that, too, with the city council. And I want to give the applicant a fair share here, but I want to read these comments. And, you know, like I said, I'm not a fan of billboards. I don't think there's, there's no upside to billboards at all. They just bring down the city. But that's just me. And businesses need to make money, too. But, you know, City of Quincy needs to have a nice city. Billboards is not the way to go. You're right. So if you'd, uh, if you'd be all right with that, April, August 10th, I can bring that news back. We can have a vote that night, or maybe we don't have to vote, depending on what the city sources say. Fair enough? Guys?
I muted them.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, oh, yes, us. Sure, sure. I'm fine.
Yeah, sure. Oh, yeah.
Mr. Kavais, we have a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In matter number 21-18, John Flatley Company, Florida Variance at construction, a center Mount Paul billboard sign on the premises number one Crown Drive. I make a motion to continue the hearings at August 10th.
Second.
On the motion, seeing them, Madam Quirk, we have both white, the voice votes.
Michael Bayet?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Marty Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Further on tonight's.
Can we take five?
Yeah, take five. Bring it right back. Mute, mute, mute.
Recording stopped.
Take this back, okay, under new business, let's start that part of here. Attorney Patrick Foley for variance to demolish and replace the existing structure with a new structure, including nine apartment units, 400 square feet of commercial space in the premise 27 Franklin Street. Is the applicant or the representative here, Mr. Foley?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley and I'm the attorney representing APO3 LLC. I'm also joined here today by Brian Slutie, who is the architect for this project. We're actually requesting that you hear our case tonight and make a decision on it. We had a planning board meeting back on June 9th that went well and had no opposition. We are set to go back to planning in August for our second meeting. If anything changes at that time, we will be more than happy to come back and address it. We have done extensive community work. We've met with the city council, we've met with the appuders, we've met with the mayor's office about this project. The property we are here to discuss today is 27 Franklin Street, which is located in the Business B zoning district of the city of Quincy. For years, this property has been a problem in the neighborhood, along with the now closed adjacent bar. These properties have been an eyesore, a haven for drug use and crime, and has had frequent visits by the police. The applicants have owned the property next door for over 30 years, and in those 30 years, they have run a small, family-run business. They've spent many of these days picking up nip bottles, needles, and having employees bothered by people loitering at this property. When they finally had the chance to buy this underutilized property, they jumped at the opportunity and are excited to have an opportunity to clean up this blighted property and improve the neighborhood that they've been a part of for over 30 years. The applicant is proposing to replace 27 Franklin Street with a nine-unit, three-story building that is 7,585 square feet. The building will have four two-bedroom apartments and five one-bedroom apartments. It will also include 400 square feet of commercial. I just want to add that the two-bedroom units will actually be advertised towards people that want to utilize that second bedroom as a home office, because these type of units have actually become more popular since COVID, with the amount of people working at home and want to utilize the space for a home office. To address parking, the building will have 13 parking spots, but there will be six additional spots at the applicant's property at 21 Franklin Street in the back of the building in that parking lot, bringing us up to 19 parking spots. I'm now going to kick it over to Brian Slutie, our architect, who's going to get a little more detail about this project.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, good. So I'm here to explain the plans that we've prepared for the project.
Okay.
I'd like to share screen. Hopefully this works.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, you see my city area?
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you. So from an area perspective, the 27 Franklin Street project is located, it's right here, it's located in the vicinity of St. John Church and School Street to the north, and Water Street to the south, and Bergen Parkway to the West Lee side. The existing house on the lot looks something like this. This is an existing condition plan, and we're basically planning on demolishing the building that's there now. As Patrick said, the lot contains 7,585 square feet. It should be noted, however, that there's over a six-foot slope in a downward direction from the rear of the lot toward the front of the property. So I got a picture of the existing house, looks something like this, that we're going to be demolishing. This is a site plan that was prepared by Bill Buck, the site engineer from Bay Colony Group, showing the three, showing the proposed three-story, nine-unit residential building footprint. This shows the proposed water, sewer, electricity, and gas connections, which will be available off Franklin Street and Franklin Place. Also shown is an underground, onsite trench drainage system located on the Franklin Place side of the property, which you see here in blue. Another item to note is that the developer has introduced a new five-foot-wide concrete public accessible sidewalk along Franklin Place property line, which you see right along here, it's in yellow.
Yeah, it's nothing.
Okay. The proposed building is shown centered between these two existing buildings on the left and right. This illustration shows a combined commercial and residential property to the left, and a commercial office building to the right. Across the street from the proposed building, if you're looking north on Franklin Street on this photo here, the project would be located on the left, and across the street where the arrow is, is the back. So there's a back across the street, followed by multi-appartments and commercial properties as you're going north toward Quincy Square. Note that these pictures show a mix of building materials, heights, and various roof types. What I've shown, illustrated, is a proposed three-story Type 5B wood-framed building, which is going to have concrete spread footings that will contain eight units of apartments on the upper two floors, along with an adaptable apartment and a small commercial space located at the ground floor level. We are also proposing a parking garage for 13 cars in a small utility basement area under the commercial space, which you can see a little clearer on A1. The total square footage for the proposed three-story building, now this includes the covered parking in the basement. It's around 13,500 square feet. Also, the average height for the proposed building is 35 feet 9 inches. I'd like to talk a little bit about the grade change if I can get into this tomorrow.
I like the instance I'm finding.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the grade change on the property. It presents a little bit of a challenge, because there's a six-foot change in grade over a distance of 75 feet on the front of the property toward the rear. So this is the front of the property and here's the rear. The rear of the property has the high point, which you can see this, you know, illustrated on both these sectional drawings. This worked out very well for the covered parking area for the 13 cars on the upper rear portion of the property. This proposed parking area also blends in well with the grade of the existing parking lot next door, where the office building is, which will be accessible, by the way, by way of a gate. I'd like to take it just back to the A1 drawing. Show you the floor plans.
Yep.
The floor plan shown on the left of the drawing shows a typical layout for the second and third floors. There will be a total of eight apartment units on each of the two floors that are varying from 800 to 890 square feet. There'll be a total of four one-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units, plus there'll be an additional one-bedroom unit on the ground floor level. All nine apartment units will typically have one two-bedrooms, one bar, one kitchen, an open living dining area. The upper story apartments will have a common corridor, which you see here, that it'll be linked to two egress stairwells that could lead you directly to grade as required by code. Now, the ground floor plan, which is in the middle here, which you can see on the A1 drawing, shows a commercial space on the corner of Franklin Street and Franklin Place, which is a nice spot for this case, because there'll be plenty of visibility here. There's also a main entrance to the apartment within the middle of the building, which is right here, which connects to a vestibule and a mail area. This entry vestibule will also provide access to a basement mechanical room, which you see over to the right, which will be utilized for the electric panels, meters, plus any other mechanical-related equipment, like water heaters, sprinkler equipment, et cetera. I'd like to take the elevation drawings on the A2 drawing. This shows a continuous asphalt-chingled manside roof on three sides of the building, with a mix of clapboard and brick materials on all the exterior of the sides. The ground floor, retail, and main entry areas have aluminum and glass storefronts, which you can see on the Franklin Street elevation. There are also four, what I like to call brick masonry pumpouts, which will have peaked roofs, and French doors, double-hung windows. This is shown on both the public facing sides of Franklin Street and Franklin Place. In addition, there will be an elongated canopy roof located at the ground floor level, which continues along the two public streets. This canopy will allow for protection against the weather and also provide shade. The majority of the windows in the upper façades are double-hung types. Note that the rear elevation looks a little different. This shows a flat roof section, which will be protected by an adhered membrane roofing system, and will allow place for the mechanical condension units, skylights, and ventile. So that kind of basically describes the proposed building plans for the project. I can give the floor back to the chairman.
Yep, thank you. It was a nice looking building you did there. Mr. Cavares, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't. I don't at this time.
Just, so Brian?
Yeah, just for clarification, they said there was nine additional deeded parking places. Could you tell me where those are, please?
Yes. Six faces next door.
Next door on the red building there?
Yeah, when you come out the back, you can.
Okay.
21 Franklin.
All right, thank you.
It's six, not nine.
Six.
Right, it brings us up to 19, so it's supposed to be.
Oh, all right. I knew there was a nine in there somewhere.
Here you go. Mr. Redell, questions?
None at this time.
Mr. Himmel, any questions this time?
No questions. I think it's a good improvement for the neighborhood.
Yep. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? If you can get rid of that... Play that screen right now, if you could, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? First call? Tony, you want to speak? No.
That'd be in favor, you're building it.
No hands.
All right. Marty, you freeze?
I think he did.
Melt.
Oh, boy.
Well, thankfully, guys, we don't know what to do in this situation, so we're just going to sit here and wait.
I really don't want to jump in, because Marty's on a roll here, so, you know.
This is one attorney Foley's hoping that he's charging by the hour.
Now Tony wants to talk. Tony wants to stop the clock right now.
Well, should we just keep going? I mean, we did in favor. Anybody opposed or undecided?
Well, usually in the middle, we have to see to say correspondence, which the chair has with him. Where'd the chair go? He just, he's probably coming back. Let's be a little patient.
Waiting for him to come back in.
Been a long night already, Mike.
Me too.
Recording stopped.
Ooh.
Got all kinds of technical difficulties.
This is a first, right?
I don't think we've had this. I don't think Marty's fallen off. Though, the first meeting, he might have, and then we figured it out.
Yeah, I think it might have been, yeah.
Guys, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Now we don't.
Now we can't.
Boy, look at that legal billing meter spinning.
Okay, I control the mouse. Go ahead.
Is there any, is there any picture here now for me? No, I'm out?
No.
All right.
We can hear you.
You know what I look like, right, guys?
Yeah.
I can be in the black. I'm all set. All right, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Looking for anyone? Second call? Third call? All party hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor. I think it's a beautiful building. I think it did a real good design with that, and I love the idea of the six faces coming in from these other properties. I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Cavares?
I will certainly be voting in favor. That's places that are eyesore forever, and I know that it will be done properly, so.
So Brian?
Nice job, Mr. Slutie. Very nice. I agree. I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Himmel?
I'll be voting in favor as well. You're right, it's been an eyesore forever, and the Agnites are good corporate neighbors, so.
Yes, they are. Can I vote motion, Mr. Cavares?
In matter number 21-38, Attorney Patrick Foley for variance to demolish and replace the existing structure, where the structure, including nine apartment units and 400 square feet of commercial space on the premises number 27 Franklin Street, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Second?
Yeah, we did.
Uh, Madam clerk, can we have a voice vote, please?
Mike Cavares?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Marty Akins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for your patience tonight.
Thank you, guys.
DPA 2139, Amelia Follen for a finding to construct a dormer in front of the home on the premises 27 Madeleine Street. The applicant and representative here.
Amelia.
Amelia?
Hi, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, are you a lawyer?
I'm not a lawyer, no. I'm just a homeowner.
Yay. Mr. Cavares, could you please swear in?
Do you swear to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Amelia, you have the floor. Why don't you explain what you want to do?
Yeah, hey, so yeah, I'm here to ask the board to grant a finding, to allow my husband and I to construct a dormer. I'm on the front of our Cape style home at 27 Madeleine Street. We are not originally from Quincy, but we were renters in the neck. And when we were first newlywed, five years ago, we fell in love with the neighborhood. We found this home and jumped on it, knowing that it would need some love. And now we're hoping to grow our family, but know that we need a little bit more space. So constructing this dormer would allow us to add a third bedroom and a master bathroom, and hopefully allow this to be our forever home, because we really love our neighbors, and we really love where we live, and we want to stay here for a long time. That's it.
All right, you live beside the morning hints.
I do, yes. They're very great neighbors, yes.
Great neighbors, great people of housing.
The whole neighborhood has been just fabulous.
And sisters across the street.
Yep.
I don't have any questions. I see what you want to do. You want to make pitch of the roof the same as the other side of the back of the roof.
Exactly, just, exactly.
Mr. Cavares, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Mr. O'Brien?
No question, just a comment that kind of matches the rest of the houses in the neighborhood, so.
Exactly. That was another thing, too. Our house has aluminum siding from back in the day, so this, we're going to reside the whole house, so it'll match the other houses and sort of the character of the neighborhood as well.
Nice work.
Mr. Himmel?
Nice design.
Thank you. Let me, let me go through the hearing. Is there anyone who want to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? Counselor? Counsel McCarthy?
Yeah, thanks, Chairman Akins. No, just a couple of comments, and I know everybody has the right to do work on their home. I know that this particular house has popped up on my radar in Inspeccional Services as a house that is on HomeExchange.com, which falls into the Airbnb-type scenario. Am I wrong in saying that, Amelia? Do you people exchange your home all the time?
Not all the time. So we are on HomeExchange, that is true, but it's not like Airbnb in the sense that, first of all, there's no money exchanged, so we don't, we don't earn money from this, we don't charge money for this. It's just, my husband and I are both teachers, so we have sort of a limited amount of time to travel, and when we do, it's just a way to basically economize travel. But the people who have stayed in our home have always been quiet, respectful. We have house rules, and people follow them, and we always follow up with neighbors to make sure that these, you know, expectations were met.
Well, one of, one of the items that we worked on diligently, having no Airbnbs in Residence A.
Yes.
In the city.
Definitely is not Airbnb.
And one of the things we also put in there, too, in the ordinance, and I checked with the city solicitor, or the assistant city solicitor, Steve Durkin, is swapping homes. So I'm just a little concerned that the increase in size is to increase the popularity of your home in regards to Home Exchange. Are there only, there's just the two of you as at home?
Yeah, it's just my husband and I right now. So just to give you an idea, like, our upstairs is two sort of large bedrooms, and then one small bathroom, and we want to ideally have two kids. So really, the idea here is that we would be able to take the one large bedroom and make it two small bedrooms for kids. It's not in any way a marketing ploy, or we're not trying to, you know, increase the popularity of our home for others. We're really just trying to be able to grow a family in this home.
Well, I think the point I'm trying to make is the Home Exchange and the Airbnb go together. It's the same thing. It's a way to get around the Airbnb. And I know that Director of Inspeccional Services, Jay Duca, is going to be contacting you unless he already has.
No, I haven't heard anything about it. I, go ahead, sorry.
Well, he's going to, he's going to want to talk to you about that. There's a few others that are down there that I'm looking at right now also, that are finding ways around that ordinance of Airbnb. And that's one thing I know that the neighbors don't want, is they don't know who's next to them, they don't know who's coming in, they don't know how long the person's coming in. So when I saw this, it just turned the light on a little brighter to take a look at it, because it, it seemed like the house was getting prepped a little bit more, as more marketable on HomeExchange.com. I'll leave it at that for now, but we're going to look at it. Amelia, I know that Steve Durkin, the city solicitor, and I know Jay Duca, I spoke both of them in length the past couple of weeks, because we are looking at all those different ways to swap homes around, and I know there's a lot of neighbors, and that's why we banned the Airbnb to start off with, and we put in the, also the verbiage about swapping homes, that we don't want to see that in Quincy, because we don't end up knowing who's coming in next to them, who they are. Probably all great people, but, but we don't know. And the neighbors in other areas in my ward have brought that up, over on Wintrop Street, down on Rock Island Road, and we've kind of quieted that down. So that's all I want to say. I know it does anything with zoning, but I wanted to make the board aware of that as they move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Last call? All party hearing closed. I have a lot to hear from DPW, June 24, 2021, 27 Madeleine Street, case number ZBA 2139. We have reviewed the above-referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call?
No hands.
Second call? Third call closed. I'll be voting in favor, I know. And counsel, there's places on Mayor's Ave, there's places on Sea Ave, which you know, that you're dealing with all those two, and I know it's not an easy job, and thank you for keeping an eye on the community. I know it's not an easy job, and thank you for keeping an eye on the community. Uh, I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Cavares, any comments?
I will be voting in favor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, likewise.
Mr. Raydell, comments? Mr. Himmel?
I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Raydell?
I'm in favor. I don't know if you hear me, sorry.
I did, no. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Cavares, can I have a motion, please?
Uh, yes, as long as Amelia tells me how to pronounce her last name.
It's very easy. So it's like, if you think of the animal a lion, cut it in half, and then get rid of the H. Afalion.
Afalion. Hey, for a finding to construct a dormer in the front of the home on the premises number twenty-seven Madeleine Street, I make a motion to, uh, grant a finding.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote, please?
Mike Cavares?
Yes.
Claire O'Brien?
Yes, ma'am.
Brian Riddell?
I'm in favor, but I don't know why Mike asks how to pronounce a name when then he butchers it after he asks.
He was his own boy.
No comments.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Marty Aiken?
Yes. This laptop won't belong, I'm out. What the heck is going on? Tell me, somebody tell me.
You're all set.
All set. Uh, furtherman of tonight's new business, ZB A twenty-one, twenty-one forty-one, Claire O'Neill, for a variance finding to reconfigure the layout and construct a rear addition to the existing two-family home on the premise name one oh nine Thomasburg and Parkway. I don't know why that wasn't on.
Hello?
Yes. Uh, Claire?
Hi, yes, can you see and hear me?
You can.
I see and hear you. Could you please, Mr. Cavares, swear in?
You swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you.
Hi, um, okay, so my name's Claire O'Neill. I am here on behalf of my father, Pat O'Neill, who owns the property at one oh nine, one eleven Thomasburg and Parkway.
Claire, what's your address?
I live at eighty-seven Ames Street.
Okay.
My dad lives on Glendale.
Okay.
So this is a property that he's had for quite a while now, and he is planning on reconfiguring the layouts of the both floors and putting on a rear addition. Um, these will be both rental, um, properties that, um, this house is already a rental property with two units. Um, basically what I'm here for is I'm looking for a variance relief. Right now, our variance is point three eight, and once we go over the variance, it will be, um, after the construction, it will be point five one, which will still be less than both neighbors of ours. And I'm here with my, um, architect Glenn Hoffman, who can answer any specific questions regarding numbers.
Well, I mean, number of parking spaces, you got two, and you got stock parking here. Why is that garage there?
It was for ritual there. It was bought, it was bought with the property, so it's been there since we've had it.
But are you gonna tear that down and have parking spaces in the back? Because the way it's laid out is just horrendous for people living there. I don't even know. How, how would two people live there with a garage there? How would you get carpet and out?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's been like that for years, and so, I mean, it's, you just have to communicate with your neighbors on how the parking.
Well, you're asking us.
We are getting the, um, we're getting rid of the garage, so there will be added, like, more parking area and make it easier and less, and like seamless.
But I want to know, as the chairman of zoning, and the board wants to know, if you're putting an addition there and you're making these bigger, we want to know where's the parking for this, for this extra room you built?
Okay, so there's still gonna be two, like, the first floor is gonna be a two-bedroom, which it is now, and the second floor is gonna have two bedrooms on the floors for, uh, on, so this
Second floor.
Floor apartment is two floors, consider, consisting of the second floor and the third floor. The, that will be a three-bedroom apartment, which it is right now, so we're not really changing anything, room rise, we're just reconfiguring it to make the layout more better and to add like, room for that living, like, for them to live. The bedrooms will be bigger, the kitchen will be bigger, but the outline of the house will relatively.
Well, you're putting an addition on the back, correct?
Yep, and that's just to make the apartments bigger.
What, what do you have? A layout for your parking? What is the layout for your parking gonna be? I don't see, I don't see no changes here.
Um, okay. We're just, we're gonna knock down the garage and just make a bigger driveway.
Yeah, it's gonna be longer. Well, what do you, how are you going, what are you gonna do in the backyard? What? We don't have anything here, but it says two parking spaces. And to me, if you want to make the home bigger, I want to see you do something with that backyard and do something for parking in that area. There's no place to park there. Where do you park? If you don't park in your lot, there's no place to park.
Relatively long.
Huh? The driveway can be long, but you can't have, like, five cars long. People can't get in and out.
You want to see an updated site plan showing the garage demoed with the new parking layout, correct?
Yep, correct.
That's what you want to see?
Yeah, so there's no sense in even seeing what we got here without that, because it's just, is, you wanna, you want to increase the value of the home and, and increase the rooms, and there's no place to put anybody. So, what do you, what do you look like another, another date? And August tenth is taken. It's, it's full now already. What's the next one after that?
August twenty-fourth.
August twenty-fourth. Does that work with a new set of parking plans with this plan?
Okay.
Does that work for you?
The, so, you're not gonna, you won't be able to vote on it tonight just because of the parking situation?
I'll vote no. If you ask me now without, I'll vote no myself, and I don't know how the other members feel, but if you lose one more.
No, I'm just trying to understand the process, so, um, you are.
What we're trying to say is if you're gonna, you're gonna increase this property, you're gonna increase the square footage on your property, yet you, there's nothing that says we're doing it for parking. I, I mean, there's room back there. You could have three or four spaces, I think, if it was done right.
And that, so the addition will be adding six feet, and right now, right now, we would have, before, when we were living in there, we would have, like, four people max occupancy for two bedrooms, on top two bedrooms down, is usually, and they would have, they've had no problem so far, but I understand your concern, and I have no problem getting the updated plot plan with the reconfiguring for the extra.
All right, let me, let me ask, uh, the rest of the board. Mr. Cavares, I don't know how you feel about this, but.
No, I, I think that they're, they're asking for something that, you know, I'm sure was grandfathered in of having these parking spaces, but, uh, if there's room back there and, uh, Mr. Hoffman thinks that he can provide plans for us, I think that that's, uh, good, and we should wait.
What about, uh, Marty, I know we've done in the past, and I'm just not seeing, not gonna see much opposition to this, and like, like the applicant said, there's not a lot of square footage we're adding. What if we contingent on, you know, a parking plan showing at least four spots or something? I mean, you, you can see, like, I just drew it out on here, and you can see clearly that they probably have enough square footage to put, you know, four spots and still have some decent green space in the back with some turning around. I'm just trying to find a solution that saves them six weeks.
We can get the plot plan updated very fast.
How many, how many, where do we have an attempt? What exactly, how many votes, though? How many votes?
We have five new and three old.
What, what are the three old?
One is with no public.
No public, just the vote.
Yeah.
And what are the other two?
Um.
Sorry.
That's okay. Have C, C Street, one of C Street.
All right, that's not gonna be bad either. It's a C, A, or N, and a flatly sign, and that's not gonna be.
That's for city solicitorship.
Right. That's not gonna be a major, uh, major. So those three, we could put on, all right. If you could get that to us within a week, can you?
Glenn, would that be okay with you? Are you able to do that in a week?
Yeah, we gotta check with the survey, but you used, um, Paul Pianigan, I believe, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just tell Paul we need it within a week, and that's that, and, um, we'll show the parking and show the demoed garage, and that should satisfy the, the board, I think.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, we can get that within a week.
Right, we can do this attempt, because all the other three mostly are gonna be both ground falling, E, C Street.
Just get them to me in time to send.
Yeah, uh, but they have to be here by next Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
We have to get them in the mail. It takes three or four days, so we'll have them for the weekend before. I just want them by the weekend before.
All right, we'll get them, we'll definitely get them by end of day Tuesday.
Thank you. Mr. Cavares, any motions, please?
Mr. Chairman, in matter number twenty-one dash forty-one, Claire O'Neill, for a variance finding to reconfigure the layout and construct a rear addition to the existing two-family home on the premises number one oh nine Thomasburg and Parkway, I make a motion to continue hearing to August tenth.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
So move. Uh, under tonight, we have, uh,
You're welcome.
Twenty-one forty-two. You, I, I apologize. For a special permit floodplain variance finding to construct a one-story addition and a roof deck on the premise number seventy Kyleisle, the applicant and representative here. Seventy Kyleisle? Hello? Anyone here for seventy Kyleisle? Really? Second call, seventy Kyleisle? Third call?
Mine have to, I don't know whether I'm here.
All right, uh, we're gonna make a motion and move that until August twenty-fourth.
Mr. Chairman, in matter number twenty-one dash forty-two, wait, what, what did you say? I'm sorry.
Twenty-fourth.
Thank you. I'm not able to try to say this name. For a special permit floodplain variance finding to construct a two, one-story addition and a roof deck on the premises number seventy Kyleisle Street, make a motion to continue hearing to, uh, August twenty-fourth.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn?
Second, and all in favor?
Yeah, all right.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I know it was a long night, but, uh.
Enjoy your vacation.
And they're gonna get longer.
Enjoy your vacation.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
See you later.
I'll talk to you about that.
Recording stopped.
We'll get those letters out soon.